Clerk, ready when you are. Okay, I will now call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Will the clerk call the row?
Councilmember Wu, councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Hersi.
Here.
Councilmember Colacetti.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin.
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from April 28th, City Council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Hersi and seconded by Councilwoman Colacetti. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay, that motion passes. Next item is additions to the agenda, are there any? No, okay. Next is presentations and public input. We'll do presentations first, there are two proclamations, the first being Here to Serve You Month, proclamation presented by the mayor.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. It's proclamation by the mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas today, we proudly celebrate and honor the employees of the city of Urbana, including our essential service teams, first responders, safety inspectors, administrative professionals, the clerk's office, grant administrators, planners, and others whose unwavering commitment to excellence strengthens the health, safety, welfare, and prosperity of our community. And whereas, these dedicated Urbana public servants that are here to serve you were tirelessly to ensure that the quality of life for our residents, businesses, and visitors remain a top priority, day in and day out. And whereas, city of Urbana staff consistently go above and beyond to deliver exceptional municipal services while cultivating safe, vibrant, and thriving neighborhoods where people can live, work, and play with confidence. And whereas, the city humbly acknowledges the contributions of our employees and the special observances that honor their work, including Building Safety Month, Public Service Recognition Week, Community Development Week, Municipal Clerks Week, International Firefighters' Day, Economic Development Week, Administrative Professionals Day, National Police Week, and National Public Works Week. Now, therefore, I, DeShawn Williams, Mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Here to Serve You Month in the city of Urbana, Illinois, and I encourage all residents to engage with the critical issues surrounding municipal services and to recognize the invaluable contributions of our city professionals who work tirelessly every day to enhance our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not just this month, but throughout the entire year. Thank you. One more. All right. Whereas, the city of Urbana Building Safety Division is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of disaster. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the vigilance of the Building Safety Division, and whereas, these guardians are dedicated to safety codes that are designed to protect us in the building where we live, learn, work, play. And whereas, Urbana benefits economically and technologically from using the Urbana City Codes that are developed by a process that upholds the highest of standards. And whereas, Building Safety Month is here to remind the public that the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety are local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, energy-efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to Urbana's prosperity. And whereas, game on. The theme for Building Safety Month 2025 encourages us all in Urbana to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. Now, therefore, I, DeShawn Williams, Mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Building Safety Month in the city of Urbana, Illinois. Thank you.
Next item is staff report. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, public input. If anyone wishes to address the committee of the whole, please do so now.
Hello, thank you. Once again, I urge you to keep the approval of Imagine Urbana in committee until there has been a housing study done to determine if the assumptions in the plan are correct and valid. We also need more time for meaningful public input. Now that we have a draft of the plan, the residents of Urbana need an opportunity to have small, possibly ward, meetings where we can meet with the staff or plan commission and get answers to our questions. The city staff has provided you and us with their outreach efforts, but has not provided you with the actual input from residents. How hard would it be to list the date of the event, the number of people who attended, what questions were asked, and what were the responses? How many people said they wanted more density and housing in downtown Urbana? How many people said the zoning ordinance needed to be changed? Were any developers consulted to see if they would agree to build more in Urbana if the zoning and the permit process was easier? Were the questions asked open-ended, like, what would you like to see the city of Urbana focus on? Or were they prompted questions like, would you like to see more diversity in housing in downtown Urbana, or do you think your rent is too high? Please take some time to let the public have a dialogue with staff about how these changes will really impact us all. Have we misinterpreted the plan and the subsequent actions? If so, please take the time to explain it to us in real, small group meetings. And on a side note, while I do not disagree with the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance being voted on tonight for stairs to encroach into required yards, I do disagree with staff citing little moves from the draft plan before it is approved. Thank you.
Yes, Grace.
I had an email that was asked to be read aloud in some subsequent back-and-forth communications. I think I can get it in five minutes, but buzz me if not. Dear councilmembers and Mayor Williams, I am writing to express serious concerns regarding the special use permit application for the proposed communications tower included in ordinance number 2025-05-015, Plan Case Number 2501-SU-25, on the committee of the whole agenda for May 5, 2025. My concerns center on three main areas, the accuracy and completeness of the application, the adequacy of its review, and its compliance with the city's zoning ordinance. In the application for the telecommunications zoning review of Attachment B, page 37, the applicant describes the project as, quote, "swapping an existing 100-foot pole with a 120-foot monopole and installing lights and telecommunications equipment," end quote. By also referring to the existing light pole as existing tower facilities, the applicant portrays the project as a straightforward tower replacement rather than the construction of a new tower. This characterization appears to have shaped the city's review, enabling the proposal to bypass a full zoning analysis, particularly regarding lighting. However, under Section 131 of the city's zoning ordinance, the current light pole does not meet the definition of a tower. As such, the proposed 120-foot monopole must be reviewed as a new tower, not as a replacement, and is therefore subject to all applicable zoning requirements. This includes Section 131-1.1, which prohibits artificial lighting on towers unless required by the FAA. Since the proposed ordinance does not specify a waiver for the prohibited lighting, the proposed tower does not comply with Section 131.1 of the zoning ordinance. There's a source listed there. In addition, the applicant failed to provide a meaningful analysis of alternatives. Attachment B, page 144, simply lists and dismisses four existing towers without offering the comprehensive evaluation required by Section 131.R.3.A.10. The section calls for a detailed review of existing towers, other structures, or alternative technology. Moreover, Section 131-R5 emphasizes that no new tower shall be prohibited, or shall be permitted unless the applicant demonstrates to the reasonable satisfaction of the plan commission and city council that no existing tower, structure, or alternative technology exists that does not require the use of towers. This requirement is essential to ensuring that new towers are approved only when truly necessary. Without information regarding alternatives, the council cannot determine whether the proposed tower is essential or simply a more convenient or profitable option for the applicant. It is also important to clarify that the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 does not inherently protect the right to construct new towers. Rather, it safeguards the provisions of wireless service, which may, under limited circumstances, necessitate the construction of new towers. In this case, the applicant has not sufficiently demonstrated that a new tower is genuinely necessary under the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance. Given these issues, the council appears to have the following options: one, approve the permit despite the missing variance and incomplete justification; two, deny the permit and request a corrected, complete, and compliant application; three, amend the ordinance to include the required variance, accepting the provided justification as adequate; four, take no action. Please note that option four is limited by the Federal Telecommunications Act requirement that local governments act on applications within a reasonable timeframe. I respectfully urge members to consider option two. Denying the permit under these circumstances would reinforce the city's commitment to fair and consistent enforcement of zoning regulations while remaining compliant with the Federal Telecommunications Act as upheld in Voice Stream Minneapolis Inc. v. St. Croix County, and they got the citation there. Finally, it is worth highlighting that this permit involves a lease commitment of 50 to 70 years. A long-term project of this kind deserves careful scrutiny by city staff, the plan commission, and the council. Yet, the plan commission introduced, reviewed, accepted public input, and approved the proposal in a single meeting. This stands in contrast to the commission's other recommendations on this agenda concerning porches and porch stairs, which appeared at at least four commission meeting agendas. Thank you for considering these concerns. Regardless of the outcome at the meeting tonight, I believe it is important that these issues are included in the public record. Please feel free to contact me with questions. Sincerely, Tom Schroeder. Thank you.
Is there any more public input? Yes, Gia.
I see another email that's been requested to be read. Starts, please read this into the record. Dear Mayor and City Council, today, Michigan Attorney General Dana Nessel dismissed charges against seven pro-Palestinian demonstrators right before a judge was going to rule on a motion to disqualify Nessel's office over alleged bias. Said defense attorney Amir Maclid, quote, "This was a case of selective prosecution rooted in bias, not in public safety issues. We're hoping this sends a message to other institutions locally and nationally that protest is not a crime and dissent is not disorder," end quote. Here in Champaign County, the Sixth Circuit is still prosecuting six activists who a year ago engaged in a peaceful, message-driven campus protest against the collective punishment of almost 2 million internally displaced Palestinians. They used tents, pardon me, to symbolize the displacement, and thus their only real threat to the community was camping without a permit. Instead, the police were ordered by UIUC administrators to clear a path for the protesters, that is, the police were forced to lay hands on the students in order to make way for the F&amp;S crew to remove the tents. This disgraceful decision-making led to peaceful student activists being charged for mob action, a fictional crime to justify a brutal and stupid police response. With Israel preparing to further decimate the Gaza Strip and massacre civilians, how many of those cheering on our own selective prosecution are still claiming Israel is defending itself? With Trump sharing his own vision of ethnic cleansing in Gaza, how many of us are still scorning the courage and moral integrity of those activists by supporting prosecution? Enough, tell the state's attorney to drop the charges. Respectfully, Ron Costa.
Okay, if there's no more public input, we'll move on to the next item, staff report. No, nope. No staff report. Okay, next, we will move on to new business. First item is ordinance number 2025-05-014, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, amend Section 65.B for clarity, and to update regulations allowing stairs to encroach into required yards. Plan Case Number 2500-T-25.
Okay, good evening, council, mayor. Since this case was mentioned in one of the emails that had been read, I just want to clarify, so this case did appear on four plan commission agendas, however, it was continued several, it was continued three times, so we actually only discussed it and pretty briefly at just one meeting. So just wanted to clarify that before I started. Okay, so tonight, council is being asked to approve an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would allow stairs that are used to access buildings and outdoor living areas like porches and decks to encroach into required yards up to six inches from property lines. The plan commission reviewed the proposed text amendment on April 17th and unanimously recommended approval to city council. Now, as you may recall, back on February 10th of this year, council denied a major variance request that would have allowed porch steps to encroach into the front yard at 501 West Washington Street. And while council seemed to have a consensus that the request was pretty innocuous and that the outcome of granting the request would be preferable to following the strict letter of the zoning ordinance, council found no special circumstances to support the variance and therefore denied it. Council then asked staff to draft an ordinance to amend the zoning regulations regarding porch stairs, so that's what the case before you tonight is about. So essentially, what this amendment would do, it would change Section 65 yards, sorry, 65B3, it would change that paragraph to state that uncovered stairways, stairway landings, and stoops which are used to access buildings and outdoor living areas and which are at or below the plane of the ground floor of a building may encroach into a required yard, but not within six inches of a property line. Also, this amendment would clean up Paragraph 5, or Subparagraph 5 there, but it wouldn't change the substance. I believe I have the text, I didn't actually load it up on here, but if anybody wants to see it in real time, I can pull that up as well. But that really concludes my report. Plan commission recommended 6 to 0 to recommend approval of this text amendment, so staff concurs with that recommendation.
Are there any questions for Kevin? Teresa?
Okay, I want to understand, because usually we get some kind of pictures or something of what someone's planning, so I can't visualize in my mind what this, how this is going to encroach on someone's property, or actually what the
Yeah, like what it would allow.
What the argument is.
Yeah, so I'll use the case, sorry, I don't have any images or anything from the No, that's okay. So if you recall the case that was brought before you, the variance case back in February, somebody had wanted to put an addition on the front of their house, and then they wanted steps coming off of that addition heading straight out from the house to the sidewalk.
The sidewalk, rather than going from the driveway to the house, they wanted to change that. That's what I remember, they wanted, okay.
Yeah, so we, so before this text amendment, we would not allow those steps to encroach into the front yard. So this text amendment is to essentially say, you know, steps should be allowed to encroach into the front yard if they're being used to access a building. We do, so it's different in that case, so that was an addition on the front of the house, but we do allow porches, we allow front porches to encroach into a required yard, but then we don't allow steps to encroach into a yard, so there's actually, it's actually this odd situation where we say, you can have a porch that encroaches up to 10 feet into your front yard, but then the steps coming off of it can't encroach at all. And we think that was an oversight. There was a text amendment back about, I think, 20, 25 years ago that clarified how we allow porches to encroach, but we didn't also amend the paragraph about stairs. So this is kind of cleaning up an oversight that's, you know, quarter-century old.
Okay, okay. All right, that helps, especially since you referenced the other issue regarding the steps coming from the driveway rather than going on the sidewalk. I remember that, because, okay.
Yeah, I don't know, sorry, I'm trying, I'm looking, oh, here we go, all right. Here, I'll show you some visuals that I showed at plan commission, okay? And I'll make the same horrible joke there, I had my five-year-old draw these. No, I have to take credit, I drew these. I'm taking credit for it. Okay, so, but essentially, here's what we, here's, right now, so if somebody has a 25-foot front yard, which is pretty standard in all of our residential zones, you can have a porch that encroaches 10 feet into that required yard. Wait, is that 15 feet? Shoot, I didn't even scale this right. Anyway, the upshot here is these stairs right now are not allowed, which seems crazy when you say you allow the porch there. So we also would not allow stairs going off the side right here, because that would still encroach into that required 25-foot front yard. What we do allow is you could put stairs right here and basically right here only, which looks weird, it doesn't make sense. Plan commission agreed with me and recommended that you approve this.
Okay. That we approve the first five-year-old picture.
Yeah, so this would be allowed, the thing that makes the most sense, right?
Okay, no. Yeah, I get it.
Thank you for letting me show these drawings.
No, you did a great job in, yeah.
Okay.
Grace?
Thank you, yeah, thanks for sharing the drawings, I appreciate the question, I think that helps illustrate and jog our memory on this. Also, when we were talking about the specific instance, and if you could confirm that this applies to everything here, that there's no safety concern or visibility or anything with stairs encroaching closer to the right of way?
No, there's not, and I mean, this is the type of thing you will see in older neighborhoods, and you'll see them and you won't think anything, you know? You won't say, that's horrible, it's just, there's stairs there, so.
Then I've come to learn a lot through this process, and I'm having a knack for thinking of weird, extreme, what-if scenarios with these kinds of things, and I see, looking closer, I think that maybe it's been addressed with, starting from the ground floor of the building or lower, I was just trying to think of, like, what if someone says, okay, for my second-story window, I'm going to make like a giant staircase that blocks the view of like the cars coming out of their driveways up to six inches to the property line, and I think maybe that addresses that, if you've considered that already as how to prevent that?
Yeah, so I hadn't, so at plan commission, they brought up a couple of sort of hypotheticals as well, and we addressed those, but let's see, hold on. Yes, because the, yeah, the outdoor living areas have to be at or below the plane of the ground floor of a building, so you couldn't have, yeah, you couldn't have something coming from the second story, and you couldn't have, say, well, you couldn't have a second-story porch that, yeah, that then had those stairs encroaching as well, so yes.
And somebody could make like really long stairs, like instead of your typical like step, 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 like they could go like, really like, long step, long step, but it seems like, is there any concern to that? That's just kind of a design thing?
Yeah, I mean, there's really not, so that's why, so planning and our building safety folks review all the plans that would come in for something like that, and we would just flag that and say, this, you know, that seems like you're doing a series of sort of outdoor porches that are stepped and not just steps, so we'd be able to catch that in the review process.
Okay, so there is still like kind of that internal staff review, even with things that are allowed by, right, like this?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, so we review, you know, building safety reviews many, many things, so there'd definitely be review in stairs, so, yeah, we'd catch that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Kevin? Yes, Chris?
Thanks, Kevin. So if this were to pass tonight and next week, the original applicant that kind of started this conversation, would they be clear for takeoff to do their project?
They would be, and I'd say of equal importance is then we would never be troubled in the future with similar requests that, you know, frankly, aren't worth the time to review them.
Yes, James?
I can make a motion if we're ready.
Please.
I would move ordinance number 2025-05-014, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, amend Section 4-5.B for clarity to update regulations allowing stairs to encroach into required yards, Plan Case Number 2500-T-25, to the consent agenda for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Quisenberry and seconded by Councilwoman Hersi, the ordinance number 2025-05-014, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, amend Section 6-5B for clarity and to update regulations allowing stairs to encroach into the required yards, Plan Case Number 2500-T-25, onto city council on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Six discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, discussion. Yes, James?
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, for bringing this back to us exactly the way I remember us talking about it. I know we had a challenge with that one particular request, and the option was to make it legal in all cases, and I appreciate it. I do not feel at all that this is related to the master plan, the comprehensive plan, this is, you reacted directly to council feedback on what we should do, so thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
Gia?
Yeah, I also want to say thank you on the quick action on this, you know, like I said earlier, I'm glad when we're following the Constitution, I also think it's important that we follow our local ordinances, and if there's a problem, that we fix them, and I think this is a good example of what that process could look like, especially as we're looking at a new comprehensive plan, too, right? That the ordinances don't just go away, that there is an actual process to change them, so appreciate the speed, and I think it's a good example of pushing some of those overdue and very clearly needed changes through, so thank you.
No further discussion, we'll take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Next item is ordinance number 2025-05-015, a lot of fives today, an ordinance approving a special use permit, 102 East Michigan Avenue, Plan Case Number 2501-SU-25, DRA Properties LLC.
Good evening, council, and welcome, Mayor Williams. The item before you is a request for a special use permit for a wireless cellular tower with antennas on the Urbana School District 116 campus in the CRE zoning district. On April 17th, the plan commission reviewed and voted to recommend that council approve this special use permit and to waive requirements for security, fencing, and landscaping with the condition that construction be in general conformance with the submitted site plan. Staff concur with this recommendation and request to have the item placed on the consent agenda. The purpose of this cellular tower is The purpose of this cellular tower is to improve response times by emergency service providers to the Urbana School District High School and middle school campus by providing antennas in close proximity. That's, let me correct that. That is the impact on core services of this proposed tower. The primary purpose for this tower is to improve cellular coverage for staff and faculty and students and parents and residents of the nearby neighborhood in the area of the school campus. A byproduct of that is also providing emergency services better response times, and that's how it will impact city's core services. This proposed tower would also align with two objectives of the 2005 comprehensive plan, which is working with utility providers to ensure dependable, affordable, high-quality services to the Urbana community, and also to plan for future needs of the community to ensure residents have safe and reliable utilities. The Plan Commission draft report was included in the packet, and also the draft Plan Commission minutes were just distributed now. They contain additional background information and discussion. We had one letter of objection from a neighbor, and we had a letter of support from the Urbana Police Department. Those were both included in the packet. As discussed in the staff report, U.S. Congress, through the Telecommunications Act, provides state and local governments with the authority to approve the location of towers and requires local governments to follow those requirements laid out in the staff report when reviewing applications for telecommunication facilities. I won't go through all them, but if you have any questions about them, feel free to ask, and I'm happy to try and answer. There is a requirement that the Act reserves the power to regulate placement of cell towers based on potential human effects, human health effects to the FCC. So you can talk about location, you can talk about aesthetics, all that stuff, but effects on human health are reserved for the federal government to regulate. In addition, the special use permit would be subject to review by City Council at five-year intervals to determine if changes in technology have changed such that the necessity for the permit has been eliminated or modified, and if the permit itself should be modified or terminated as a result of those changes. There would be no fiscal or budget impact to the city. No members of the public testified at that Plan Commission public hearing, and we actually received two objections to the special use permit, which were included in the staff report packet. Again, the Plan Commission recommended unanimously that City Council approve the special use permit, including waivers for the requirement to provide security fencing around the tower and for the requirement to provide a vegetative buffer around the tower itself. The one condition was that general, construction be in general conformance with the submitted site plan. Just to briefly cap about the recommendation on those two waivers, the wireless cellular tower is replacing an existing athletic field light pole that has lights installed on it. Those lights are going to be removed from the existing light pole and put on the new cellular tower, making it a multi-use item. And because none of the other light poles around the field have security fencing around them or have a vegetative buffer around them, it does not seem to make sense to require those simply for this other tower that has a cellular antenna on top of it. The tower is designed to not be able to be scaled without specialized equipment and training, so that's why the applicant is requesting those waivers. The next step, if approved, the applicant would apply for building permits. That is the end of my staff report. I'm happy to answer questions. The applicant is here to answer questions as well.
James, go ahead.
Thank you, Marcus. I do have a couple of questions. Included in the packet was this description of a previous attempt to put up a cell tower like this. I take it that one did not succeed?
That application was withdrawn.
Okay.
It had been-
That was about 14 years ago?
Yes, exactly. It was 2011.
Okay.
And it was for a 150-foot cellular tower that was designed to look like a flagpole with the antennas inside it. So it was 30 feet taller. It was also, I believe, closer to residents. So it got continued from the Plan Commission case to allow the applicant to look for other alternatives elsewhere on the campus that might be more amenable. And the applicant at the time chose not to continue the application process.
And this one does not look like a flagpole?
No.
All of that?
It looks like-
Bittery was from that previous attempt?
Yes, yes.
So, and the provider is Verizon Wireless?
Correct.
On Vine Street, between the middle school and the Tiger Academy, there is a very complicated device on a light pole that I've been told is a 5G cell installation. Is that, is that Verizon Wireless, or is that AT&amp;T, or?
I'll let the applicant answer that if they're able.
Let the applicant come up and answer that question. Great.
Yeah.
Should be on, yeah.
Here we go.
Hi, my name is Katie Greer. I'm here on behalf of Dolan and Verizon Wireless. That particular antenna that you're looking at, that is AT&amp;T, and that is what we call a small cell. It handles a much smaller amount of, of calls. In fact, my understanding is from Mr. Gutsmer, Gutsman, who is from the school district. It helps with the middle school, but it does not quite fully help with the high school. It can only handle a limited number of calls.
So, but it, is it, can it carry for multiple carriers?
No.
Or is it, is it only AT&amp;T?
Only AT&amp;T.
Or T-Mobile, whoever's buying off of AT&amp;T's network?
Right now, it's just AT&amp;T.
Okay. So how, how it covers doesn't make any difference if you're a Verizon customer?
Correct.
You're, you're stuck. And believe me, I've been in the commons area of the school district. I know what the Verizon coverage is like over there. So, so we would have multiple cell towers in this vicinity with that. That's not going anywhere, right? That's going to stay there. You don't know that, but I, John, AT&amp;T's going to keep that there, right? So the one question that we had from a letter from resident asked about how this was approved, and maybe this will be for Marcus, so I think you got the part that I, that I had that you could help with, is that the light pole is not a tower by the city code definition. So how can this be approved as a tower replacement if it's not a tower?
So, there were a lot of issues that I had with the letter that was submitted.
Sure.
It was very confusing to me. The light pole is a light pole. It is not a tower.
Okay.
The proposed cellular tower is a tower. So saying that the light pole is a tower, nobody ever said the light pole was a tower.
Okay.
They would be taking down the light pole and replacing it with a tower that they would put the lights on to. So I'm not sure what the-
Well, I think the implication was that if it was a new tower, that there would be a more, yeah, a longer process or a more involved process to approve it.
Okay.
Did we follow exactly the process we would have followed?
Yes, the, the entire process is getting a special use permit.
Okay, so it would be the same?
It, I wouldn't-
There had been a light pole there, it would have been exactly the same.
Yes, correct. If, if, if they just wanted to put up a tower, they'd have to get a special use permit.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're quite welcome.
That was one thing I thought we should ask about.
Yeah.
Sharice?
And I'm, of course, a bit confused myself in the sense that, is this new tower being put up for the benefit of the high school, or is the benefit that it gives the high school a side effect because it's being actually just a new tower being put up?
So, I'm happy to let Mr. Gutsmer respond.
Okay.
But I will start off with saying that the applicant, sorry, the school district asked the applicant to design and build a tower that Verizon would then put antennas on because that would solve the school district's communications issues. So, DRA Properties is the realty company that would be using, it's convoluted.
DRA Properties would be the company that would build and own the tower. Verizon would then lease from Dolan to be on the tower. And the, the school district would also put their lighting equipment on the tower.
Okay. Now, this lighting equipment, because I get the feeling that, is this over by the football field, or?
It is. It's, it's, it's right on, right at the football field. And in fact, the tower we would be putting up would be right on the 50-yard line, which the existing light pole is not on the 50-yard line.
Okay, the existing light pole is where?
Six feet over to the west.
I just need to see, okay. Okey doke. Oh, yeah, there, go back, go back.
So, here is, this is in the plans. So the red star is where the existing 100-foot lighting pole is. And then the blue star is where the proposed 120-foot monopole tower.
Okay. This is the practice field?
I, I can answer. The one to the north is the regular football field. The field to the south is the soccer fields.
Okay, this is a soccer field. I'm, I'm just trying to, okay, thank you. We didn't have a soccer field when I went to Urbana, so barely had a football field.
And just lighting towers serving the football field.
Huh?
The lighting tower actually serves both fields. There's, there's lights on both sides, one for the, one facing the football field and one facing the soccer field.
Okay, okay. That, that helps, thank you. So this is actually something that is for, that is for the benefit of the high school and their response time? Their, are their abilities? I just want to try to understand that.
As it was explained by, I'll let Mr. Gutsmer explain.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, the district actually reached out to Verizon several times over the course of several years, tried to get this project moving. We increasingly rely on cellular communication inside the buildings for emergencies with teachers and administrators. And so right now, in that kind of four square blocks every day, there's 2,500 people who have very limited cell service access, which is causing kind of a health, life, safety issue for us. So we've been working to reach out and improve this cellular service. You can see there, the high school, middle school is kind of right in the middle of that yellow block, which if you have more questions about what that means, she can talk about that. But this is instigated by the school district for the benefit of the school district, and then it will also benefit everybody else who lives kind of around that area, if you wanted to talk about the block.
Okay, so it's, so the, the cell tower, that's what I wanted to understand. The cell tower being put there is actually, the, the neighborhood is the side effect that will benefit, but it's actually being put there for UHS? Okay.
That was orange.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
And just so you understand, this is a map of the current coverage that's on the screen here. And right now, you can see there's a yellow. That means we have unreliable service right there. Green is unreliable in-house, and then blue is of reliable in residence. And you can see right, pretty much smack in the yellow is where the Urbana High School, this, school and middle school are. And you can see that on the right, that is what it would look like with that tower there. And that would, you can see, there's much less yellow, much, it helps very much right there. It will also help with the, the neighboring sites because they, right now, they're trying to cover that area, and they're getting pulled, all the calls from that, that yellow area are going on though, so they'll no longer have to handle any calls from there. They'll be covered by the new tower.
And if you're a Verizon customer, you, you've got it made?
It will definitely help, yes.
Basically, okay. That, okay, that's what I wanted to understand, too. Thank you.
I, I do want to offer that there is room on the new pole for at least one other set of antennas, and that could be Verizon, or it could be some other carrier. So it's, there's no requirement, there's no guarantee, but our zoning ordinance does require co-location as the preferred preference. So if somebody came and said, "I want to put up a tower," and we said, "Well, there's room on the new high school tower. Do you want to put it there?"
So there's no vegetative barrier and no security fence because this is an unscalable tower? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is part of it. The other parts in the staff report are that the entire athletic campus is surrounded by, I think, a six-to-eight-foot-tall iron picket fence already.
Oh, getting access to the tower itself is difficult.
Right, yes. You would be trespassing on, on fenced school campus property. So that was the, the first response when I asked about how is this going to be secured.
What about during a game?
I think there would be 14 other light poles that would be as available to be scaled.
Well, people and security are also everywhere, too, during a game.
Right.
There's no chance for damage to the, you know, the pole itself? I mean, anything can be damaged, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the other 14 light poles could have a truck run into it.
Right, right. Okay, okay. But we're betting with pretty good certainty that there's no way a kid could, athletic kid could scale this thing and fall and hurt themselves.
Yes. As somebody who's walked around a few cell towers, there's not, you know, a whole lot. I think typically, and I'll let Katie to speak to it, I, I think they're, they're usually accessed by trucks with ladders, kind of like billboards, but I'll let Katie, the expert, speak on it.
So for towers of this type, it's actually, there's specialized rigging equipment that people use to go up the towers. And you need extra equipment just to reach the point where anything could be climbed. There are some cranes that go with that, but most people who do it actually have, like, rigging and climb up the tower. But you would, you would definitely need that equipment to get up there safely.
Thank you.
And to get up there at all.
Are there any more questions for Marcus?
Grace? Thank you. Been checking off some of the ones that have already been asked and answered. Could you confirm a few things, just out of curiosity? So the contract with the school and Verizon has already been signed and committed for 50 years with options to extend, and for payment of $500 from Verizon to the school per year? Is that right? Or the other way around? Yeah, I'm confused here.
No. So what would happen is Dolan is actually paying the school district for use of, of the property to put the tower up. And I want to say, I'm sorry, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's at least $1,000, which could change. And in terms of if another carrier comes on, there will be additional rent that goes to the school.
And that's, sorry if you're not looking at it right in front of you. I see the section four about rent. The rent for the first five years will be 1,000 per month, paid in advance to lessor. And then it says, like, section one, the option, talks about $500 paid to lessor by leasing.
So I can explain that. So this is, we have an option period, which means that we have basically secured the opportunity to do this, but we haven't yet started the lease. And that is a, the $500 that you're looking at. Once we have executed the option, the lease fully starts. Once we have, uh, executed the option, the lease fully starts. So for right now, while we're going through this process, we have the, uh, option to do that. Basically, we're putting a hold on it so that the school cannot, uh, just decide to do something else with that particular location that we've discussed.
Okay. And so the payments are all from you all to the school district?
It would be from Dolan Realty to the school.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. And your kind of layaway option there. I like it. I have a few more, or we can cut and go another round? Is there any lighting required? That was also in the email. Is there lighting requirements?
There is no lighting required by the zoning ordinance for this tower because it's below the FAA's threshold height.
And, um, our special use permit approval would be for 50 years with options to extend up to two more, 10 years, and have, will be subject to review at five-year intervals to determine technology changes.
Correct.
Which I appreciate that one because I think that, yeah, 50 to 70 years is a really long time to commit to something especially that moves and changes so fast like technology. Yeah.
Yes.
Don't know what we'll be using for communication in 70 years from now, but it's probably not going to be the same cell phones we're using today.
Pigeons with jetpacks.
Yeah.
That's my bet.
Um, what is that process, like, subject to review? Does that just mean like we have an opportunity? Will that be an official, like, we're actually going to remember five years from now to review this?
That's a really good question because the zoning ordinance doesn't give any details. And this would be, I believe, our first one since this zoning ordinance amendment was passed in 97.
Because I think that might be helpful. You know, say like at six years, we're like, wow, something changed, but we just forgot to do it at five years and now it's too late. So maybe some kind of system or reminder there.
Staff would definitely put a note in the, um, plan commission database that says to be reviewed on, on five-year intervals. And we can probably maybe work with the clerk to figure out something on a long-term calendar to...
And then something else to clarify, I was trying to understand some of the school motivation because I hear you for emergency situations or needing to reach out. I've worked in schools with limited cellphone and Wi-Fi service and it's challenging when you're doing stuff in a digital age on iPads and things. Um, but also it's under the standing that, you know, as a state, we're moving away from cellphone usage from students in the classroom. And it was helpful for me reading some of the input that also tracking, um, threats that are coming in by phone is another important piece here. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah. We've had several incidents in the last three years where not only, uh, students at the middle school, you might have heard, are now keeping their phones in pouches, but parents can still, the pouches aren't, uh, Faraday pouches or anything, so parents can still track their students, uh, even if they have their phone in the pouches. In general, over the last like 15 years, the number of students with cell phones has kind of exploded, uh, at the high school. Sometimes they use them academically, but mostly they discourage use for class, but a lot of people getting picked up from sports events after school, uh, for students. So definitely a benefit for the students as well.
Thank you. And then my last one, I know we're not supposed to talk about the radiation and leave that up to the FAA, which I understand and am doing, but I do think I have the right to ask for some clarification, um, that this meets those regulations, especially when people are up high in the bleachers, right? Because my understanding is once you're up higher, you're getting a different level of radiation than at the ground level. So I would like some more information, um, as evidence to support that this does meet the existing federal guidelines.
Hi. I can tell you, uh, that Verizon operates at, uh, a fraction of a percentage of the federal FCC limits regarding, uh, the radiation. So we're, we're literally talking fractions of a percent, uh, from these antennas.
And is there anything you could provide just to confirm that even at different height levels? Anything you could give us to kind of show that satisfaction?
So what I can tell you is that we do run, um, uh, we do run studies for every site that we do everywhere, uh, that looks at those levels and where things are. I also want to let you know that, uh, these levels go down exponentially the further you are from the tower. So even 10 feet does, you know, it can make a difference. But the, the, uh, tower is far enough away from the, the roof, um, the top level of the bleachers. We have multiple different, uh, towers like this where we are by a bleachers and that we will be operating at a fraction of a percent, like I said.
Okay. And your, I guess, industry standards are that you have to be within those regulations? Is that right?
That's correct. And, and we, we do operate within those regulations.
Okay.
Many, many times lower than them.
Thank you. Thank you.
James, go ahead.
All right. This is probably not our question, but, um, when this tower is put up, are lights going to be put on it to cover the lighting that this light pole used to do?
Yep. The existing lights will be replaced in exactly the existing heights.
I'm just, that's just a curiosity. So, um, and, um, I, I do think Grace's point about who looks at this in five years is very important because nobody sitting at this table may be sitting at this table in five years because it's more than four years away. How we, how we follow up on that's great. What I'm hearing is that the school district is not paying a dime for this to happen and it's going to get $12,000 a year, um, of revenue?
That's correct. And just, uh, for the record, the revenue isn't the biggest part for the school district.
No, but every little bit helps, right, John?
But yes, we'll take the $12,000.
Yeah. And so my, my que, my, I, I, I'm going to put Elizabeth on the spot and, and say, do we, as a city, do we benefit from a cell tower like this being added? Is there a fee or a tax that goes along with it?
So in Illinois, there's something called the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act, which provides for municipalities to charge fees when these are deployed on the right-of-way. But this is not on the city's right-of-way, so I don't believe that we would receive any revenue from this.
Okay. And is, is that something we could consider going forward?
Haven't thought about it.
Because we're always trying to figure out how to change with the technical times from a revenue standpoint. I just think it's something we should think about.
Wait, taken.
You did get the $208 special use permit application?
All right. Yeah, that's great.
Chris, go ahead.
What's the diameter of the pole?
Checking our various technology devices.
We couldn't find it either.
It says, it says, it says eight feet at the base, four feet at the top.
Eight feet? That's...
Yes. Uh, it does taper as it goes up. It, it will be, uh, slightly wider than the, the tower, the light pole tower that is there, the light pole.
I'm sorry. We're trying to understand because they can hear me, I know, but I forget people that aren't here.
Yeah, it does.
We're trying to, Chris and I were just trying to understand how the, because I'm, and maybe we're looking, maybe I'm looking at the, uh, just the light pole because it doesn't show or say that there's any tapering and it says tower elevation and, and, um, we're trying to, uh, figure out what the, um, exhibit A. I don't know if that's, is that what's coming down or is that what's going up? That's what I, yeah.
The, the numbers I read may have been from the thing in 2011.
This drawing is not the scale, but you can see that it starts wider at the base and tapers toward the top.
Oh, okay. Okay. I have to look at this one. I don't see that. Need to make this small so I can see them. Okey doke. I guess... Did it answer your question, Chris, too?
Yeah. I think Spider-Man's going to have a hard time climbing that, so that's good.
Yeah.
Based on the sketches, it was about 40% bigger than the existing tower.
Okay.
Which is about that big.
Okay. Thank you.
Grace?
Sorry. I had one more last question. Um, also from the email, it, um, stated in here, just want to check that section 13-1- I don't know if that's a one or a capital I or lowercase L, actually, prohibits artificial lighting on towers unless required by FAA. Is that not accurate?
That is not a fully accurate interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Let's see. Regarding the proposed lighting fixtures on the tower, it refers to lighting installed to illuminate the tower itself, such as floodlights illuminating a flag hung, hung off the pole. Uh, the lights proposed to be moved from the existing light pole to the new cellular tower are designed to eliminate the athletic fields, not the pole, or, sorry, not the tower. Therefore, no variance for lighting is required.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, it is below the threshold for the required flashing light at the top by the FAA.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Okay. Gia?
I can make a motion. Um, I'll move approval of ordinance number 2025-05-015, an ordinance approving a special use permit, 102 East Michigan Avenue, Plan Case Number 2501-SU-25, DRA Properties LLC on the regular agenda. In case there are other questions. I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Cola Setti and seconded by Councilwoman Wilken, um, that ordinance number 2025-05-015, an ordinance approving a special use permit at 102 East Michigan Avenue, Plan Case Number 2501-SU-25, DRA Properties LLC, on to City Council on the regular agenda for approval. Are those, uh, any discussion? Gia?
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you to Marcus. I, I had some constituents who had questions and he was able to provide very clear answers to those questions. And I think, you know, especially hearing like there's, there's safety concerns, right? Like if, if our teachers can't communicate with the, with each other, um, or with the outside world, if there's an emergency, and unfortunately, the world we live in now, we know that's more likely than it used to be, right? So, um, I'm glad there's a revenue component for our, our schools and, um, I appreciate the time the city staff has taken to answer the questions for myself and for, for residents in, in moving this forward, but I'm, I'm happy to support it.
Grace?
I just want to say the same thing. Thank you for your patience from, uh, Marcus and from representatives from Verizon and the school district. I appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions. I know we had maybe quite a few, but I don't think we've seen anything quite like this before. So I know I've learned more than I had before about cellphone towers and their regulations and things. So I just appreciate your patience in answering our questions thoroughly.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. That motion passes. Okay. Moving on to ode business, ordinance number 2025-04-013, an ordinance approving a comprehensive plan, Imagine Urbana, Plan Case Number 2502-CP-25.
Good evening, Council and, uh, Mayor Williams. It's nice to finally say mayor instead of mayor-elect. It rolls off the tongue much better. Appreciate it. Anyway, we're here tonight. Um, I've got a overview here of what we're, Kevin and I are going to cover this evening. Uh, so we first wanted to talk about the, um, different, uh, feedback we got from the meeting last time. We'll go over what those changes, any changes that we've made and, and following discussion. And then go over what the recommend, recommendation options are for the committee of the whole. And then we're going to have some comments from Mayor Williams at the end. So, um, there was talk, uh, we had public input as well as from the council, uh, about, uh, Mayor Williams' involvement in the plan. And, um, he and I have had some brief conversations. We're going to be following up in the next, uh, next couple of weeks as well. But since the, uh, Urbana, since Imagine Urbana spans two different mayoral terms, um, we're in the process of revising that letter and we actually took a joint photo today of, um, Mayor Williams and, um, Mayor Marlin. And, um, if we use that down the road for the picture. And that's yet to be decided, but we'll certainly work on that. One of the, uh, items, oops, excuse me, one of the items that came up was providing the responses that we've been giving to the public, putting those in a central place and making them available for all public, which was a, a great idea. Um, so we made those, uh, changes. They were posted online on imagineurbana.com, uh, a couple of days after the meeting. Uh, they were also sent to all of you as council members and we also sent them to our neighborhood and HOA contact list. And so everybody got those on the 23rd. We also made available handouts, uh, outside. I don't know if you saw them on the, um, table, but also here in council, but not everybody can enter council chambers to get that, so they're outside on the table. Um, there were also some broken web links, uh, due to the new city's website. They didn't convert over. Appreciate that, uh, being brought to our attention again. And, uh, Kevin actually worked on those links and tested those the next day, so all of those were corrected. Any, anything else on that, Kevin?
No.
Okay. Um, and then, um, it was Mary Alice that brought up about, um, the introduction to big move number one about addressing Urbana's diverse housing needs. And you can see the edit that was made here. This was also sent to Mary Alice so she could see it as well. I don't need to read that to you, but the bottom, the sentence down at the bottom, I think, really addresses what that concern was. Uh, "The changes now focus on people and inclusiveness versus buildings." And so it speaks to Urbana's vision about being a welcoming community for everyone as well as big idea one, Urbana is a place for everyone. So instead of talking about, um, buildings, we're talking about, uh, it's for, we need more housing for people of all ages and income levels. And then Kevin, our principal planner and zoning administrator, administrator, is going to talk about the next couple of items that we've got here.
Yeah. Um, so there was a, there was a desire to, um, sort of see a comparison between the existing, uh, 2005 comprehensive plans, future land use map and the 2025 place types map. Um, this is something that we had, so we had kind of put together when we were, um, initially having discussions with plan commission about place types. So I think, as I stated last time, um, we started with the future land use map as a base and then we made changes to that sort of, you know, based on, on the direction we, you know, we see things going or just, just cleaning up things that didn't make sense, um, anymore. So let me, I, I think I just need to get out of this and actually get out of that. Okay. So I haven't posted this online. It's, it's kind of tricky to, I don't know, to put these things together, but, um, or to make them, to make them easily available. But, um, so this is the, the place types map. And essentially any area that's sort of hatched with this hatching, if you can see it, I'm, I'm going to zoom in more. So any area with hatching is sort of an area that I flagged as I was going through the process, um, initially myself and then when, after going to plan commission and making any changes there. Um, anything that was sort of changed between 2005 and now, I just flagged it so that we could visualize the hatching on it. So I'd say one area I was thinking about earlier as I was going through this, so I'm at Bradley Avenue and Lincoln Avenue. Um, this area here used to be the Illinois American Water Lagoons. Um, so that in our 2005 plan, that's labeled as institutional because it was owned by an institution. That's gone away. We would love to see that redeveloped. We would love to see that redeveloped with a grocery store and other things. So we've labeled that as a neighborhood center place type. So that's why that one's changed. Other reasons we might change something is, like, the cemetery up here. For whatever reason, we used to label cemeteries as institutional future land uses, when really, they're actually pretty, like, decent green spaces. So we've flagged all cemeteries as green spaces instead of institutional uses. Other things, like over here, this area is essentially the same. It's labeled as commercial now. In the current plan, it was labeled light industrial and office. But we really, in our discussions with Plan Commission, we've kinda collapsed light industrial and office into sort of the general commercial category because the way that people do light industrial things these days are pretty, I don't wanna use the word innocuous, so take out your thesaurus and think of whatever word goes with innocuous. And it's, you know, it's not like belching smoke and like a place you don't wanna live next to. So, I kinda collapsed that down. So...
Many of the IT uses now are, or the light industrial maybe has more of an IT focus? Is another reason?
Yeah, so, yeah. So here's sort of the map, it kinda lays out the changes. Some other things, I guess, that are relevant here. So we did sort of downtown, that was our sort of a central business, future land use. So that kind of tracked. Some of the place types that we created are kind of new, so they don't really track exactly with anything that's in our current plan. So like this area over here, south of University, west of Lincoln, this is the campus mixed-use zoning district. It's also flagged as being campus mixed-use, future land use in the current plan. But since we came up with this new place type that we're calling university neighborhood, which, I don't know, it's pretty close to the campus mixed-use. So maybe we don't need to flag that as a change, but I just wanted to make sure that we called that out as, you know, it's different than what exists. Same with the corridor neighborhoods along Springfield, and then along the east side of Lincoln. Those areas are sort of things that don't really exist in our current plan, so we flag those as changes as well. So I'd be happy to talk about that going forward. But, moving along through the presentation, one of the other questions from Councilmember Wu was to provide some examples where the zoning ordinance does not align with Imagine Urbana. So, to tackle this one, I kind of wanna speak in sort of overarching and generalities, and then sort of get into more specific things, and then get into maybe an example, and I'll try to go through that example somewhat quickly, but it's actually like a real-life example, so I kinda wanna spend a little bit of time on that. But in general, I would say that our zoning ordinance as a whole does not align well with Imagine Urbana. Where it does align, I think it's because we've tacked things on over the years to address the ordinance's shortcomings. So, like, when we made changes to the R7 district, which has a lot of Greek houses in it, when we made changes to that to allow sort of those buildings to be reused, I think that thinking aligns with Imagine Urbana. Same with the campus mixed-use changes that we just recently did. Those types of things really align with Imagine Urbana, 'cause if you recall, in that text amendment, we're trying to make that area sort of more walkable, and, you know, having buildings come up close to the street, putting the parking behind. So things like that, those are sort of changes you can make to zoning ordinances that do align with Imagine Urbana. But, on the whole, the ordinance is really written to, you know, essentially have a pattern of development that's based on sort of this vision of having sort of single-use areas, like residential over here, commercial over here, industrial over here, and expanding the city outward. So, you know, that's why our zoning ordinance has things like minimum lot sizes that are larger than the lots that already exist in the older parts of Urbana. And that's, you know, and really, it's, the ordinance is kind of written, thinking about outward expansion, and then over the years, we realize, hey, we have these old neighborhoods, and then we kind of, like I said, we tacked things on to sort of help the ordinance work a bit better for us in certain areas. I'd say the vision that our ordinance was founded on is dated, and I'd say it's even antithetical to sort of what Imagine Urbana is envisioning. And, you know, I'd say it's often kind of what's not in the ordinance that does not align with the plan. So the ordinance seems to kind of lay out what we don't want versus actually explicitly stating what we do want. So, you know, we want walkability, we want connected neighborhoods. Our ordinance is silent on all of those things, except in those areas, like I mentioned, like campus mixed-use, where we actually added some things to sort of address walkability, address connectivity and things. So, I will say, another exception is our design review districts. So we've got a few. We've got the Lincoln-Bucy District. We've got the mixed-office residential district. We've got the historic East Urbana District, which encompasses, I don't know, a handful of blocks over here, not the entire neighborhood. Those work pretty well because they say, here are the types of things that we want. You know, we want buildings that have entrances that face the street. We don't want blank walls. You know, we want parking behind the buildings. We want things like that. So I think it's, our ordinance is most effective when we're saying what we want. And I would love to see that going forward when we update the ordinance. The one caveat with design districts is that they have to go through the design review board when you want to do anything. So, you know, in my mind, we would have an ordinance that sort of lays out certain things, but doesn't require you to go through a process to, say, just build a new house. As long as you meet those minimum things that we've already said, here's what we want. Okay. Yes, I think I've already covered that. Okay. Okay, so, with all that said, I did want to just point out maybe sort of a couple things in Imagine Urbana. I think there's just a lot, and that's why we will need to go through a robust public process and a really thorough process to rewrite the zoning ordinance once the plan is adopted because it's much more than I can just sort of envision in my head or go through right here, but just wanna give some sort of ideas about areas we might pursue to align with the plan. So, where is this? Big idea, okay, sorry, big move number six, make walkability a priority. So that touches the zoning ordinance. There's also a lot of things in our land development code and our manual practice that need to be, I think, need to be looked at as well. So, I'll go off on a slight tangent here. But like, for instance, our streets are often really wide, so if you're walking, it's kind of tough to cross. You feel, you know, you feel kind of nervous about crossing a lot, even downtown. You know, we have a lot of turn lanes and things. We have wide corners that, you know, cars kinda whip around or buses kinda come around. And, so things like that would need to be addressed in our land development code and our manual practice. So it's not just the zoning ordinance that, you know, that we need to look at. But I would say, in terms of making walkability a priority, again, we'd look at similar changes to what we did with the campus mixed-use district, you know, buildings that are close to the street, entrances off the sidewalk, having wider sidewalks, which kind of gets into the manual practice and things, but still, it's all connected. And things like, we've talked about, like, allowing small businesses on corners and on the edges of neighborhoods. Right now, so we have certain areas in town that are zoned for neighborhood business. We used to have, and I have no idea why we got rid of this, I think it probably just got lost in the shuffle during the zoning ordinance change, but we used to allow you to, if you were reusing an existing building in a neighborhood business district, you didn't have to meet current parking requirements. Somehow that got lost, so now, we've had people say, hey, I want to, I had a guy up here along Main Street, there's a neighborhood business zoning district. He said, I wanna put a small café into this building. I said, oh, well, you would need, according to our zoning ordinance, you would need something like 15 parking spaces for that. And that was just, that just killed it immediately. And this guy had a vision, he wanted to do it. It would've been great, it was in my old neighborhood, I would've loved to have that there, but can't do it because our zoning ordinance required way too much parking for this area where a lot of people walk in an old building that people were walking by all the time. So, that's just an example. Let's see, so big move seven, promoting incremental development. This one might require looking at building code as well, 'cause I believe anything more than two units is considered commercial code, and it has a lot more onerous requirements than the residential code, which is just for normal houses. So it's more costly to do those things. But, I think there's quite a few things we could do in the zoning ordinance that would promote incremental development. I'll get to a couple of those here in a minute. I guess, yeah, I mean, those are some good examples. So, I'm gonna get into a real-life example, and then just kinda talk about things. So Buena Vista Court, I bring this up all the time. It's, I don't know if I'd say it's universally loved. I have not polled everybody in the universe, but I have not found anybody who doesn't like Buena Vista Court. The exception might be property owners, 'cause roofs leak, 'cause they're kind of flat roofs. So that's something, but they still love it. Okay, so Buena Vista Court, if you remember from Examine Urbana, we pointed out that to do Buena Vista Court, which is eight small, I'd call, you know, most people would probably call these starter homes, even though there have been people that have, you know, lived there for decades. But still, they're sort of of that starter home size and everything. To do the eight houses on eight individual lots in Buena Vista Court, we calculated you would need 45 major variances. So you couldn't build, you couldn't rebuild Buena Vista Court right now. So, you know, just keeping that in the back of our mind, it would be nice to do things like this going forward. However, the lot, okay, now we're looking, north is to the right. It fit better on the screen. So Buena Vista Court is on the top, there's those eight houses. This parking lot next to it has been owned by a church across the street for decades. They didn't need all that parking. They just sold it for $250,000. So this lot will be redeveloped sometime soon, 'cause I don't think somebody bought it for a quarter million dollars just to have it sit. Okay, so I got out my colored pencils and did some tracing, on some tracing paper.
This is his daughter, again.
This was me. I'm taking credit for this one. Okay, so you've got Buena Vista Court, you've got your eight houses, right? So, by right, right now in the MOR district, you could split it into two lots, and you could do two buildings. Each of these buildings, you could do three stories tall, six two-bedroom units, is that right? So you could get 24 bedrooms on the site. I believe this sketch would meet our current regulations. I think that's probably fine. I would guess that's probably what's gonna happen with these two lots. Another option, I know people, this one, the next one's just kinda hypothetical because I don't think it's gonna happen, and I'll explain that here in a second. But, so you could do two houses that are the exact same size of the houses in Buena Vista Court. We have a minimum lot requirement in our zoning ordinance in this district of 6,000 square feet, which I think is the smallest, well, no, downtown, we have a smaller one, but 6,000 is pretty standard for any of our residential districts. So, you could do two 1,100-square-foot lots here, or, sorry, buildings on two lots. So two sort of starter homes here. But I don't think anybody's gonna do that because it would come out, just doing a rough estimate based on the last few years of how much buildings have cost to build, looking at our building permits. These would probably cost almost $260,000 for, you know, for an 1,100-square-foot building. That seems a little high for, to me, as a starter home. Also, the most, one of the houses in Buena Vista Court has sold for is $125,000, which was back in 2020, so maybe with, you know, inflation, still, that's half of what these houses would probably need to go for. So, if we made some changes to our zoning ordinance, you could get, say, like, four houses on there with a nice path through the middle, again. Might need to do some changes to our land development code, I'm not sure. But this, you could get four houses, and then you split the land cost four ways instead of two ways. So you could, so these houses would be a lot cheaper. So, the smaller ones in the middle are 960 square foot. Those would be, you know, a little over $170,000 is my estimate. The other ones would be closer to $190,000. So definitely more affordable, you'd get twice as many starter homes. We would need to make changes to the zoning ordinance, though, to allow that to happen. You may be saying, but Kevin, I've really studied the place types map, and I know that the north side is actually corridor neighborhood, and the south side is neighborhood two. So, if you noticed that and you were waiting, I'm here, I'm here with a response. So, what we could do, again, we'd need some changes to the zoning ordinance. So those buildings now on the north side, those are like, maybe like two- or three-story apartment buildings. The one on the bottom is kinda narrow. I think it would still work. Anyway, you could do something like this. You could still have a couple of starter homes. You could do sort of a nice apartment that's along Springfield, which aligns better with that corridor neighborhood that we're going for. But to do things like this, we would just need to, you know, we need a zoning ordinance that, again, sort of states what it is we want, what types of things we would like to see. So that's kind of my vision for the future zoning ordinance. So that's just kind of an example of something that, you know, we could give people some options. So, that's my wrap of that.
The beauty of that example is that there's just, it addresses many aspects of aligning with Imagine Urbana, with how the zoning ordinance. So, we can talk more in discussion about that. Next, we just wanted to go over what the recommendations would be for this evening. As we remember, on April 10th was when we received the, or when the council received the recommendation from the Plan Commission to approve Imagine Urbana. The Committee of the Whole met, of course, on April 21st, and that's what we've gone over some of those changes tonight, and continued the discussion then to this evening, further discussion. So the options for the Committee of the Whole this evening, and I'm not telling you anything you probably don't already know, but we'll put it here in front of you. The committee could recommend to the council to approve Imagine Urbana, the ordinance number, and the ordinance would be added to the May 12th City Council agenda. Or it could be recommended with amendments to City Council. And lastly, it could stay in committee. So those are our three options. And with that, Mayor Williams, are you, wanna make a few comments just about your perceptions of the plan right now?
Yeah, no, I think ultimately what I was, you know, just saying when you and I, when we spoke earlier today, is just, first off, I appreciate the work that you all have put into this. I know it's been a long, long road, you know, up to this point. But, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I would prefer that it stays, you know, in committee just for the sheer fact of me, you know, wanting to get a good grasp and understanding on this side of the table, right, rather than, you know, me. Again, we've had plenty of very insightful meetings and conversations as, you know, mayor-elect, you know, but I've also been drinking out of a fire hydrant over the last couple of weeks, right? So, with all due respect, I would like to have, you know, just time to fully, you know, to fully get a grasp on things. And too, you know, honestly, to, you know, to ensure that we are, you know, to the best of our abilities, you know, incorporating and listening to, you know, some of the concerns and implementing some of those things. So hopefully, you aren't too upset with me with that, but that's just my thoughts around that. So, but I wanna say thank you for the time that has been put into this, and looking forward to continuing that.
Absolutely, thank you. And we do have, I know, a follow-up meeting scheduled on your calendar to give you some time, I think not for a couple of weeks, to just follow up with you to just see what kind of thoughts you've had, and if there's anything we can answer at that time.
Yeah, absolutely. Been looking forward to it.
James, questions?
Well, at this point, I don't really have a question, but since...
Well, at this point, I don't really have a question, but since Mayor Williams's recommendation is to keep it in committee, I would like to add my voice to that. I do appreciate that you have taken input from Mary Alice into what you've brought back to us, but Mary Alice is not here tonight, and I don't think she's going to be here at the city council meeting next week. So keeping it in committee would allow her to return and confirm that the responses have met what she has. Unless she already told you that, it'd be better to have her here saying that.
No, and she did not. We sent it to her in advance, and I saw her at the, at the Mayor Marlin's reception Friday night. She said she'd be looking at it, but I did know she was going to be out of town, so I don't know that she's had a chance to really thoroughly digest it.
So I'd like to make a motion that we keep it in committee, so then if someone will second that, we can discuss that if needed.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been, sorry, I lost my words. It's been moved by Councilwoman Quisenberry and seconded by Councilwoman Colossati, that ordinance number 202504-013, and ordinance approving a comprehensive plan, Imaginarbana, Plan Case Number 2502-CP-25, stay in the committee of the whole until next meeting. Do you have?
Yeah, that's what I intended.
That'd be May 19th.
Okay, is there any discussion? Yeah?
Yeah, I really appreciate the time that we're taking with this and the answers to questions. I haven't had any questions from residents that haven't been answered, but still want to give people and the new mayor an opportunity to digest this. I will say in general, anytime our answer is, this is how we've always done it, that's a bad answer, right? So I think making sure we're explaining to people what is changing now, what might change in the future, how does this overlap with the zoning process, we want to make sure people understand that. We want to make sure that people understand, yes, they're still going to have an opportunity to provide input in how things are built in this city. But I do appreciate all the time and attention that staff have put into explaining things and making sure that people have their answers to their questions provided. And I would just ask that people take some time to digest that, right? Because I think there's a lot to digest, not just in the plan, but also the feedback to the plan. And I look forward to coming back to this, so that we can think about what does the next chapter. 20 years ago was a long time, right? Things, a lot, a lot of things have changed over the last 20 years, and so being able to have a guiding plan for how do we move forward, it's time, and I think this is a really good tool for that, but we want to make sure people understand it.
Grace?
Thanks. Go back to some questions that I had. I was wondering if you had any more thought on what I brought up last time about the enterprise zones. I know that's probably one of those things where there's the difference between the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, but I was wondering if you had some time to reflect on, like, what in the comprehensive plan may be relevant to that opposite incentive kind of thing that we have going on with what we say we're trying to incentivize in development and what we actually incentivize?
Yeah, no, honestly, I had not recalled that we had had that discussion, so I haven't given it any time for thought. I do want to say that the enterprise zone has been effective in sort of filling out some of those subdivisions that kind of were subdivided 20, 30 years ago. So I think it's good that we've been filling in those areas, because, you know, next 10 or 20 years, the payments are going to be on us for fixing those roads and things when those things come due. So it's good to be filling in those, you know, those lots in those subdivisions. But, yeah, ever since I got here 11 years ago, I was kind of questioning why we had the enterprise zone sort of on the exterior of the town, and what could we do for, you know, empty lots in the interior of the city. So we'll give that some thought.
And I think at the Economic Development Internal Group, and Deshaun is joining us, we have a meeting this Wednesday, I guess. Normally, it happens today, but we waited, and we meet every two weeks. These are the kind of things that are discussion items that we need to add. For instance, I'm working with a, I'll call it a food, a restaurant that would like to come to town, and where they want to be doesn't have the incentives for that particular parcel, kind of like what Kevin's saying, anything on the internal part of the city where we want to fill in, we don't have a lot of tools. And I know Mayor Williams has already talked about, you know, some ideas that he has. And again, no, the plan itself doesn't specifically address enterprise zones, but it's definitely something that will be addressed going forward. I think all of us agree that there's weaknesses there that need to be addressed.
Thank you. Yes, I'm aware that the comprehensive plan doesn't directly address the enterprise zones. What I was specifically recalling from the last time we talked about this is, you showed the map of the outside areas of the city that would not be conducive for development, because we would require a whole separate pump station from the sanitary district, right? And one of those not good to build in areas is within an enterprise zone, where we're telling people, if you build here, we'll give you a property tax break, even though we're also saying it's not conducive to new developments.
Right.
So I think that we can, you know, I understand it's not a direct part of this, but I'm curious if there are parts of the comprehensive plan that address the idea of incentivizing development where we actually want development, and not incentivizing development where we don't want development. So I think additional enterprise zones, like within the city, would be helpful, and maybe reevaluating our current ones if they are actually where we want to incentivize development.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something that we would like to address. And, you know, maybe it does require adding a little move that specifically says that, because we talk about how we want to, you know, concentrate within our existing infrastructure, et cetera, and we definitely don't want to have something that is contrary to that. So, yeah, maybe it's adding something specific to enterprise zones. And we can certainly draft something and have that ready for you next time as well.
I had another question, idea, concern, I don't know, other thing here, on the big move one, that you showed us in one of your earlier slides, that you say residents said that Urbana needs more housing, and then we changed it. I just don't know if residents said is accurate, because it seems like now the suggestion is what Mary Alice recommended. So it seems like Mary Alice said, and maybe we should say residents expressed, or some kind of broader term, because unless a resident actually said that, or we're putting words in their mouth, or we're trying to capture the idea of it.
Yeah, I think you're spot on. I think it's more about the intent of what was said, that we need to have housing for everyone, and instead, it got worded that it looks like buildings, that we need this and that. And so, yeah, I think it's, you're spot on with that. And Mary Alice didn't come up with this language. We, this is the staff recommendation, so, you know, I don't want to have that speak, I don't want it to look like Mary Alice gave us that language. It's something that she still needs to weigh in on, too. But the intent of that comment, you know, or the, I guess, the comments we kept hearing is, you know, hey, we need more housing for those that, you know, different income levels, et cetera. And it's stated better now than it was then, I think.
Yeah, I think the way it was originally written was more of the sort of planner speak that we try to avoid, because not many people come up and say, hey, you know, we need more, well, actually, in this town, some people do, but like, more accessory dwelling units, or, you know, they're not talking about building types so much as like, hey, I need a place for my aging dad, I guess I'm speaking for myself right now, but, you know, for my aging dad to be able to afford, right? So I think the language that we've come up with here better reflects what we actually heard.
Makes sense. And I would just recommend considering, if you're saying that residents said something, either like, take a direct quote, or a summary, or like, you know, expressed a need for this, like, I feel like if you're saying that someone said, that would be like, usually what was said.
And we do have some quotes, like in the outreach summary we did in October 22, we actually pulled out quotes that said different things like that. But to make that general statement, I think it can be stated better.
Thank you. And then just one more thought here was, I mean, I think it's fine, the wording is one of the things, as you said, guiding us into the actual zoning ordinance. But I think this also highlights the need for a housing study, because maybe we don't need more housing for all people of all ages and income, maybe middle-aged, affluent, higher-income residents have plenty of housing options. So I just have some issues with saying, like, we need more of all housing. We don't know that yet, right? And that's what a study would be helpful.
We talked about this, and we left it in for that purpose, because we thought maybe this would generate some discussion. We had talked about removing the word "more" and seeing if that was more, is, better describes it.
Yeah, I think something like inclusive housing for all people and all ages and all incomes would have the same idea without suggesting that we need more of every type of housing when we don't know that, right?
We almost took out that word, and we thought, well, that's a good discussion item. So appreciate you bringing it up, Grace, and thanks.
Yes, Chris?
I just want to note that we are in a discussion regarding a motion to keep it in committee, but now we're kind of dovetailing back into questions. So I don't know, can I, do, what are we supposed to be doing, city clerk?
So it is discussion, but we didn't really pause to take questions. So if you have any lingering questions from earlier, I feel that now is an okay time for you to ask them, because the item is still on the floor. We haven't voted on it. So now or never, basically.
Okay, thank you. First, an observation, then a question for you. I think we have two different perspectives happening at the same time. Staff, Kevin, community development, it has been a five-year slog that you've put together what we've got so far. And you have tried to do community engagement at various steps of the way. That, and so you bring it here last time, and this time with the expectation that now, after five years, it's time for a vote. The other perspective is what I engage with, and that is the community and constituents, and from their perspective, whether that's right or not, is that this has been a sudden document dump in the last month, and we're all trying to play catch-up to what you've been doing and absorb this tremendous amount of information. And because you've changed the way things are described from to neighborhood types and all that, people are trying to catch up to your work. All that to say that Mayor, not only does Mayor Williams need to get up to speed, but a much significant amount of the community still need to get up to speed with your document. So it is a good thing we would keep this in committee. My question specifically is, for me, you haven't quite resolved in this presentation tonight, the issue of who trumps who here. Is the comprehensive plan, which you described as advisory, but it feels regulatory when you say the code needs to conform to the new plan. So I guess I haven't seen a good enough definition, and I asked last time, you know, who's in charge? Is it the plan or the code? Or is it a combination? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've been pretty clear that the code is what actually tells you what you can do. The plan is only as effective as the regulations that you enact to, you know, to implement the plan. So Imaginarbana on its own has basically no teeth, right? We need to make sure that our zoning ordinance, our land development code line up with the plan, and those are the things that do what the plan says we want to do. So it's, you know, the plan is what we want, and our codes are how we do it.
Given that, and you said earlier that we would need a much more robust public process and more public participation as we go about changing the code to, once the plan is adopted. What I'm hearing from citizens is we need a much more robust public process with the plan, because that's what's going to change code. So I guess that's where we're at, from a constituent perspective. For whatever, that's not a question, really. But thanks for all your hard work. I know you're getting tired, I know it's been a long time coming, but, boy, it's worth getting everybody on board.
Absolutely. And people talk about all hard work, everybody works hard. I mean, this is just a process, and we need to focus on the process and make sure it's done right. So don't apologize for saying that to us, you know, oh, we know you've worked hard, and it's time to get going. I mean, we want it done right, and we want to make sure everybody's on board. So don't, like I said, don't feel like you have to apologize, because all of us work hard. Everybody in front of us is working hard.
Thanks for seeing it that way.
Yeah?
So just to clarify again, though, just so we're really, really clear, and I know we're working on Q and A and things like this, the plan does not change the code.
Correct.
So just, you know, just to make things crystal clear, right, so that any changes to the code, the plan doesn't change it, council changes it. So I just want to make that clear.
Very good.
So that as we continue to engage in this process, as people are looking at this and saying, what could this mean in terms of what could be built in my neighborhood, this is where participating in democracy is important, right? If people don't want to see certain things in certain parts of the city, or they do, right, ideally, we're saying, what do we want? Like, let's dream, right? That's what I see in this. This is our opportunity to dream. Where do we want to go with this? But it's not something that the plan can change, the city staff can change, the plan commission can change, without this coming in front of city council for approval. And I'm saying that. So, thank you. I just, I think it's important to clarify that, right? Like, again, as we're talking about, what does the future of our city looks like, look like, the city is going to look like what we say the city should look like, right? And so this is a great opportunity for people to tell their elected officials, tell the city staff what they would like the city to look like in the coming years.
And I think, Councilman Evans, you brought up just the process in itself, and I think from the community, it seems like many have waited until it came to council and didn't speak up at plan commission. And that's just, I think that's just the way things have been done over the years. You know, they know they have a voice at council, and I don't think the community realizes that they also have a voice in this, in the plan commission process. You know, we had board meetings, et cetera, leading up to that, but once it got to plan commission, you know, we didn't have the crowds that we would have liked to have seen. And we had, we counted it up, 11, 11 study sessions and four public hearings, and not a lot of input at that level. And that's something I think we need to do a better job of educating the public about what that process is, on anything, not just the plan, but, you know, whether it's some of these zoning changes that eventually end up at council, getting that input at plan commission, so you can flesh out a lot of things, so it can make your job easier once it gets to council. And how do we do that? That's something we can certainly talk about.
Grace?
So I just had one last thing, building off of that, also just as a reminder, and maybe clarify that we can also make changes to the comprehensive plan as we go along. So I mean, I'm in support of taking more time for understanding and clarifying and bringing the new mayor up to speed and everything as well, in that collaboration, and also just the reassurance to the public that we can change the comprehensive plan. My understanding, the 2005 one, we made maybe some changes early on, and that maybe not everything, you know, in the zoning ordinance aligns with the plan. It's also not exclusively, like, because we say this in the comprehensive plan, it must be this way in the zoning ordinance, and if we find issues, we can change the plan. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And so, one issue with the existing plan is, so we did one sort of comprehensive amendment to that plan a year after it was adopted. But then over the years, we did other things that we called amendments to the plan. But then, just with technology and everything, the way you sort of cobble all that together, it's really hard to actually hand somebody something that's like the current plan. So I'm excited that this version is hosted online, and then, of course, you can kick it out as a PDF. But any amendments we make to this plan going forward will be there, so that you make an amendment, we can change it, you know, council approves an amendment, we change it, it's in the plan the next day. So we can just start, you know, showing that to people and using it. So it'll be much, I'd say, easier to get a handle on just what the current plan is, too.
Councilman Wilk, I think another thing we can do is that Councilman Wilk, I think another thing we can do is that the responses to feedback, I think we can elaborate on a couple of those things a little better based on what Congressman, or Congressman, Councilman Colicetti also said. Just got a big pay raise there, didn't you? But I think we can maybe expand on some of those questions a little bit, make them a little more clear on, you know, yeah, your comment is spot on that nothing gets changed without council approval, and just making that clear.
And sorry, could you just remind us briefly the process for that? Would that be similar to a zoning change?
It would be, yeah.
Like a case?
Yeah, so amendments to the comprehensive plan go through plan commission, so there's a public hearing at plan commission, and then we would ultimately bring it to council for your approval.
But could council request to initiate that, the same way with a zoning ordinance change?
I'd have to look into that. I don't see why not. I mean, since it's sort of a, you know, since it is our guiding policy document, I could see, you know, I don't think it would be out of hand for council to suggest some amendments to it. I'm seeing our city attorney nodding his head yes, so yeah.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. I wouldn't see it as any different from the mechanism that a council member with the sponsorship of a second to place something on an agenda for consideration or proposal, whether it's sent formally that way or by council's informal request to study an issue. I think it could be done a variety of ways.
Are there any, is there any more discussion? Sharice?
Yeah, I just want to say regarding this particular plan as well, is that my experience with the previous plan has basically been that the community development department uses the comprehensive plan to check out, check their boxes and say, well, it meets this, it meets this, it meets this, it meets this. We've been working on this, this has been getting worked on for quite some time. So I would say this, and I do kind of note this in the sense of what my experience has been while this has been happening, is that a lot of people that seem to have issues with the plan as it is, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to disrespect what their opinion is, because I can, I can respect it, trust me. But I know that there were several opportunities for input through different activities and other, you know, public meetings and so on and so forth. In every ward all around town, every time there was a park event or something, I would see Imagine Urbana out there, people had the opportunity to just give all kinds of input. So what I want to say is this, is if we're going to try to do this again, then what I would really want to see, since we're going, it assumes, I'm assuming we're going to be holding this in committee for a minute. So this is our opportunity now, now that stuff is written, because that was the difference. And when you're trying to make that draft, and when you're, and you're trying to put things together, and you're trying to get everybody's ideas, and you want input from everybody, well, now, this is, this is the conglomeration, I don't know if I'm using the right word, because I'm kind of tired. This is the result of all the five years of them doing all of this stuff. So now is the opportunity, if people want to be more specific about certain things, I want to be more specific about home ownership, for example. I think it's really important that we build up on home ownership and not make this a bedroom community for the U of I, okay, with apartments. I think people feel better about themselves and about what they can contribute to their community when they own a piece of property. And I don't care if it's even just a condominium. When you own property, you just want to invest more of yourself into what there is yet to come. So I would like to see more affordable housing. Kevin, when you said $225,000 or something for a starter home, I thought my mind was going to explode because I can't imagine that being a starter home for anybody. It seems like that would be the home you live in and die in. That's not the beginning of your life. That's going to be the beginning and end. Your grandkids are going to get that home, you know? It's going to be passed on. So we definitely, for such a small community, I really, that just really blew my mind. So what I, we all have our different, we all live in different wards and different wards have different abilities economically, and we have different expectations. And what I challenge everyone to do now is to email you guys about what they see. Actually read the comprehensive plan and look and see what it is that they think is missing and to be able to contribute. If they weren't able to do it before, now is this opportunity for you to do that. And, you know, it's a situation where, you know, people in my ward, you could write me, and I will forward it to Andrea and Kevin. Because making up a whole community, doing that kind of thing, is not necessarily what I went to school to do. He did. We all have, can have some input, and I think that that's, now is the opportunity for us to do this because now we have something in writing as to what you have gotten from the community stakeholders that did show up for different, for different things. So I don't want to try to do this process all over again, but we could call it an editing kind of session or something like that. But people who feel that they have not been able to give enough input, now is their opportunity to do that. So I would like to see if we're going to get it, and we need to, I also think there needs to be a deadline as to when that gets done. Because if, if in fact, we're, we can't go another five years, definitely. So, you know, another few months, another couple of meetings or something like that. Now, it needs to, it needs to move forward. And I think this, the publishing of it, the draft of it, is the first move forward. I don't think that we need to go another six months before we move on to make approval. But I do think that people who feel that they have not been allowed in the process should have a little bit of time to, now is your time to do it. I don't, that's my opinion. I don't know if anyone would like to elaborate on that or not.
And if I may, I think, I really like what you've said, and I think that we also need to reiterate, I think like Jaya mentioned, it can be changed even after it's approved. You know, things can be tweaked and things can be changed, and so we can always improve upon it. It's a, it's a, it's not a sit-on-your-shelf document. It's something that can be improved upon the entire time. So don't want people to think that once it's, you know, quote unquote, approved, that that's the end of it, you know? We can always improve upon it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one more thing. The one thing that I want to make sure with this comprehensive plan, I want to, what I want to know is that, like I said, my experience with it before has been like it checks, you know, when there's developments and stuff coming in, PUDs or whatever, everything the community development department would always go through and check the boxes. Well, sometimes the boxes aren't any good, okay? And sometimes the boxes are not what is good for that community. And I think that it's important that you take that into consideration, that every box is not a good box. What's good for Jaya's ward is not going to be good for my ward. What's good for Mary Alice's ward might not fit in my ward. So don't, those boxes don't count with Ward Three, that might go with Ward One, so to speak. So that needs, I think, needs to be considered and maybe even put in writing, that this isn't a just check, check-the-box type of document. It's a living document. It can change, and everything is going to be changing with it according to where you live and what you want to see for your community. And you should have the freedom to not check that box, let me put it that way. So, thank you.
We're going to get you a job in copywriting. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor to keep ordinance number 2025-04-013 and ordinance approving a comprehensive plan, Imagine Urbana, Plan Case Number 2502-CP-25 in the committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Okay, that motion passes.
And then what would you like to see for the next meeting? It'll be on the 19th. What would you like to see from staff at that point?
Yeah, we can send emails of things because once that motion closes, we're done discussing it. I think we got a good representation of, I mean, if you want to go back and watch the recording.
Well, I mean, I'll address these things that, you know, both of us, well, the things that have come up tonight, we'll make sure we get clarification on different aspects. But, you know, I do like the idea of, you know, people understanding that, hey, yeah, now's the time. If you, if you haven't read it, read it, read it and provide us input. And if we could have your help in letting your constituents know that, or if there's other ways that we can help you do that, you know, please let us know so that we can get that kind of feedback that we're looking for.
Okay, last item on the agenda is council input and communications. Yes, Grace?
Thank you. I know we had a whole special meeting with the swearing in and all that kind of stuff, but just wanted to again reiterate, congratulations to Mayor Williams and, yeah, congrats on finishing your first meeting on, in that seat in this body of government. And yeah, hope it's going well after the first one still.
Mayor Williams?
I was just going to say, congratulations to everyone again, and yeah, we survived, so we didn't tear anything up.
Yes, I'd like to echo that. Congratulations to Mayor Williams and the entire city council on being chosen to do this work, and we definitely don't take it lightly. I, for one, am beyond ecstatic to sit in this seat for another four years and do this work. I think the excitement around the city is palpable, and we saw all of that over this weekend, and it was a joy and a pleasure to see. So, any other comments? Okay, with no further business, before us, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.